To cover uh three key items. Do you have a motion?
Moved.
Motion or second?
I'll second it.
Member Carbasi, second by member Soria. Is there any opposition to the special meeting? Actually, let me do a roll call on the special meeting. City clerk?
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez? Councilmember Carza? Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council vice president Capriolio? President Arias?
Yes. All right.
Yes.
And we have a guest also. Um, okay, council. So we're gonna um start off with the public items during this emergency meeting first, so we can get those out of the way while we're still being broadcast in the public domain. The first item is item one, it's the emergency services order um to allow for outdoor dining uh sponsored by member Carbasi, Chavez, and Vice President um Capriolio. Um, is there a motion to approve this item?
Motion.
Agreed.
All right. Motion, uh Carbasi, second by member Chavez. Is there any members of the public that wish to address the council on this item? Give me one second. Uh, we're gonna go to the public first. Lysay, you have been unmuted, and you have one minute to address the council on this specific item.
Um, actually, I wanted to talk to you guys about the park, because there uh parking, because there was some information I wanted to relay to you.
All right, we 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 can't do that at this point. Um, can I?
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, I just wanna know what are the safety measures that are going to be implemented if you open an outdoor outdoor meeting?
Okay.
I mean, that's what's really of concern for me.
And then, and we'll cover that item. Um, so we'll give you that workaround. All right, um, is there's no other members from the public wishing to speak to this item? I will now go to staff, starting with our city manager. You have an unmuted, and you have the floor on this item.
Um, I am happy to see this item go forward. I just, again, wanna reiterate to council that I have staff that are subject matters and 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 these topics. And Dan Zach and Lupe Perez were already working on something very similar. And I do have a list of items that we're gonna have to work out, um, depending upon if there's outdoor dining on public property or private property, including some traffic control and insurance issues that I need to make sure that we follow. So, um, if you approve this, I would love for you to direct staff to kind of further vet the program so that we have um, we can make sure that certain things like the ABC liquor licenses, any types of insurance or public work concerns are addressed as we allow this to happen.
All right. Thank you, city manager. And the item does include a section that um refers to city manager to um formalize and finalize the final regulations on this. Um, with that, we'll go to um councilwoman Soria, who had her hand raised.
I just, I haven't seen the language, guys. It's not posted on Granicus, so can we?
We got emailed today, so we can follow up on that attachment.
Well, I don't feel comfortable voting if I don't have the actual language in front of me, because it wasn't vote. Can we at least get a chance to go to closed session and then come back? I'm I'm open, obviously, to beginning to open up, but I'd like a minute to be able to read what I'm gonna be voting on, because it's not posted on Granicus, and it would be good. Also have it.
Uh, look in your inbox, I remember Soria, while we try now. Members to speak. Councilmember?
Yes, we just, we just received it this morning as well, I believe, from the city attorney's office. So we did a quick scramble to read and comment. And
Yeah.
Member Carbasi?
It isn't, it is an emergency item, but I do agree, councilmember Soria should have an opportunity to review it. She should be comfortable moving forward, regardless of how she votes on it. So uh I'm happy to um move on to another item and come back to this, but I'd like to vote on this item today if the council feels that there's enough consensus on it.
So is there any way to go closed session and then come back? I don't have a problem with.
Well, hold on, hold on, let's relax. I've heard your comments. So we will have the makers of motion, withdraw their motion, and we'll bring back this item after closed session, so people have time later. All right, with that said.
So, well, we're council president, we don't wanna withdraw the item. We're just passing the item until this afternoon.
We're just withdrawing the motion to vote on now, and we'll hear it this afternoon.
Yeah, that's agreeable to me, as I hope it is with my colleagues.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. To item number uh B, a resolution to implement the uh housing. Actually, let's go to item C really quick, council. Um, that's the easiest one for today's afternoon. It's the appropriations of one million dollars um to the county of Fresno to fund the extension of the shelter beds. Um, the council previously approved the contract and the resolution last week, but we unfortunately missed the technical step of actually appropriating the money so that the wide transfer can occur. So this simply um reaffirms the action of transferring a million dollars to the county of Fresno to fund the extension of the um shelter beds for hundreds of Fresno um unsheltered homeless. Um, with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by member Chavez. City manager, you have the floor.
I was just going to make sure everybody knew this was simply a housekeeping item, and I appreciate the opportunity to get this on the special meeting agenda.
Yes. Thank you, city manager. All right, we're gonna go to the public on this item. Is there any members of public wishing to address this technical item that allows us to fulfill the commitment of extending the shelter beds for our homeless? All right, seeing none, um, city manager, roll call this item, please.
Thanks for the promotion. Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Carza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi? Councilmember Soria?
Muted.
Council vice president Capriolio?
Yes.
Because we're sorry, it's muted, if you, okay.
You guys gotta stop.
Okay.
Muted me, so.
All right, stop muting yourselves. You're making this more difficult.
I'm gonna send you guys.
A little posted. All right, with that, council, I'm gonna ask for your advice on this. Do you think that we can do item B quickly if you can do the closed session, or do we bring it back this afternoon for approval?
Let's do it now. It's not a complicated proposition.
I only have one friendly amendment, other than that, I I think we're good to go.
All right, and we'll hear item um B by councilwoman Soria and Capriolio. Council vice president, would you like to make a motion to approve the item?
Me, too.
Second by councilwoman.
I think councilwoman Carbasi had an amendment, something?
No, let's let's go later on. I'll do it. I'll ask you guys.
I'm gonna mute you guys if you guys keep interrupting. Um, so, there's been a motion by council vice president Capriolio, second by councilwoman Soria. Now we're gonna go to a public. So, interruptions. All right, anybody from the public wishing to address the council on this item? If so, you'll have a minute to address the council on this. Council, councilmember Carbasi, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to propose a friendly amendment. I support this item. I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, we have items one, two, and three. I'd like to introduce another item for number three and then move the current three to four. That doesn't, if that makes sense. Uh, the item would be, I don't mind the committee um selecting an administrator, but I'd like any contracts over fifty thousand dollars to go to the council for a vote, and that's what I'd like to suggest.
And and may I also ask for an amendment if someone is interested?
City manager, give me a second first before that. They'll make me mute you guys. All right, councilmember Capriolio, vice president, and uh the second maker of the motion, are you in agreement with this friendly amendment by councilman Carbasi?
I just wanted to respond. The reason that we were doing this is so that um the manager, the administration have the authority to move forward, just because it's time sensitive. We talked about a timeline in making sure that folks get the assistance early June, you know, with June coming around the corner and people already backed up with rent. So we just wanted to make sure that we um went out quickly.
I do support that. I think what we could do, because this is COVID-related, is, and we, the council's really good about on a moment's notice meeting. We can have maybe an emergency or special meeting in those cases. I would just feel more comfortable approving the contract. But I do agree with what your intent. It's a good intent.
So, um, if if we can agree to put it to bring a special meeting, I just wanted to avoid that because I know that there's some folks maybe not as keen you with coming back right all the week. But if you are all about having a meeting as soon as in the next week, even before, or I don't know. Well, then, we don't need this if we if we if we can get that.
Well, I I think the language would help, just to make sure we can do that, because now the language reads that you don't net, you don't have to go to the whole contract. Committee can prove.
All right, thank you. Less is more these days, I believe, but uh I don't know that that would uh drastically affect what we're trying to achieve here. And again, everything we pass is always subject to review and amendments uh if needed. So if that would uh facilitate a vote today and close this out, I would support that that uh addition.
All right, it looks like maker of the motion is agreeable to the friendly amendment. Uh, councilwoman Soria, are you agreeable to the friendly amendment?
With the commitment that we'll have a special meeting, so we can get those dollars out the door first. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you both.
We now go to councilmember Bret.
Did you say me?
Yes, you have.
Okay, thank you. So uh the a couple of questions. The council committee formed, uh, how will this committee be formed?
It's already been formed. It was formed at the last meeting.
And that was, who was on that uh councilman Carbasi?
Councilmembers Sparza, Soria, and council president Arias. Is that correct?
I think it's myself, Arias, and Chavez, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, and it will be, it it says to select one or more program administrators. Uh, how will these program administrators be selected?
So the administration and S will have to see who has the the capacity to be able to. There's some organizations that have already done something like this. I think I previously mentioned, for example, United Way um has experienced um doing something similar. Um, so we're gonna be essentially talking to organizations um before we bring it back to the council.
Okay, so these administrators are people you're gonna talk to. They're not gonna submit requests to the city that the council will review. It could be somebody that you know you're partial to, or councilmember Arias, or somebody else. We're just randomly selecting people that we may know in the community. There's no oversight in terms of how this.
The council's gonna have oversight.
I'm sorry?
I said the council will eventually.
Not in terms of selecting the administrators, right?
Yeah, you will have the ability to approve it.
So that's coming back. So you're saying you're going to select an administrator, and then it comes back to the council for approval?
That was my motion.
Um, the the easiest way to explain it is is that the committee will make a recommendation, and then the council will consider it for approval.
Okay, before they're selected?
Right.
Okay, good. And the administrators, how will, they will be the ones distributing the money to various people, I guess, who apply for it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we're talking about one point five million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and those funds are coming from where?
CDBG, the emergency. I think that that's what the appropriation, the CARES dollars, the CDBG CARES, whatever funds.
Any general fund dollars at all?
No.
Okay.
Fifty COVID-19 CARES Act money um in the CDBG.
Okay, and then I I have a question for our city attorney. Can any of these dollars uh be used to pay for the rent of people here illegally?
As we discussed, cash cannot be given directly to uh people who are undocumented, but rent may be paid on their behalf.
Okay, so it's an inco, i- i- it's a way of redirecting money to people here illegally as opposed to giving the money to our citizens who are here. So we're taking money that we can use to give people who are US citizens, people here legally, who've gone through the process, maybe uh uh came here from other countries, and they went through the process, and they're now US citizens. We are going to ensure, in some cases, not all cases, but in some cases, they won't get the help because we will be uh giving money not directly to somebody here illegally, but will pay their rent. So this, this is a problem for me. I expressed this last week when I attempted to try to separate uh this from the Small Business Act, which the council wouldn't do. So this is nothing more than a way to come around what was the consumer grant program from three weeks ago that a civil rights attorney said was illegal because it violated federal and state law. And then this cleverly came back to the council in a way to subvert uh federal and state law and give money to people here illegally. That's what people need to know. That's what our community needs to know, that US citizens may not get this money and will give it to people illegally. That's why I will not support uh this attempt to subvert what really was going on three weeks ago.
Thank you, councilmember Brettafield. Um, just as a reminder to those who don't understand immigration, immigration laws and immigration status of the vast majority of our families, the vast majority of our families in Fresno are mixed status, which means that there's a US citizen child, a spouse in the household, and one that doesn't have legal status. So I would suggest that is true. So then I know that you pretend to be a constitutional lawyer, a doctor, and a few other things, but in this case.
No, you're the one who pretends to be a doctor.
Immigration law and the status of our migrant families is not something that you're expert in, so.
Nor you, nor you.
Uh, the vast majority of families are mixed status, and they have.
Legal is legal. Legal is legal, illegal is illegal.
Mr. President, may I please?
Who has the floor? Please, I'm logged, but one at a time.
Councilman Carbasi has the floor now. Thank you, councilman Brettafield.
Council vice president, do you wanna make some comments before I speak?
No, go ahead. You have the floor.
Just wanna restore a little order that the core.
Does the city attorney, uh, is he on or is there a camera? Oh, I have a question for the city attorney. Councilman Brettafield does make a good point. I wanna clarify, are we violating any laws in moving forward?
No, we have done.
Yeah, and I have to.
Well, no, you're not muted.
Oh, sorry.
While cash may not be given directly to an undocumented person, the rent or other in-kind uh payments may be provided. That is.
So we are following the law.
Correct.
Okay, the reason I say that is, look, I understand the points councilman Brettafield is making. Uh, I understand there's a concern, and we can have the immigration debate at another time. If we're talking about a pandemic, or we're talking about an economic crisis that's coming, regardless of why it happens, and we're talking about whether someone's homeless, I'm not concerned with their legal status is. The person's homeless, that's their status. And I'm ready to move forward on this item.
Thank you, councilmember Brettafield, um Carbasi, council vice president Capriolio, Soria, and Chavez. City manager, you have your hand up. Would you like to address the council on this item? We want now unmute you.
Okay, a few things. I wanna clarify, um, oops. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Council, uh, member Soria mentioned CDBG dollars. Um, and I don't have last week's item in front of me. What, was this our CARES dollars or CDBG?
Oh, the CARES.
Because if it's CDBG, there's a process we have to follow, and we just simply cannot allocate dollars, so I wanna caution that.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing I would like to say is we understood that there was going to be the administration overseeing this program to make sure all of the relief funding was used properly, so we didn't have to pay it back. That is not in the resume, and we understood that it should be.
If you wanna add that, we're happy to. We had the um conversation with Mike, and everything is gonna be going through you guys to make sure that um.
So if the city attorney office could add that, we'd appreciate that. And then a couple other things. Um, our controller, uh, we don't believe, since the first is very soon, that dollars cannot get out the door by the first in order to relieve any rent that might be due on June 5th. And we haven't seen an application process yet, so I wanna caution that if you approve this, the dollars may be not able to get out the door by the first.
Oh, we understand that. We just wanna make sure that we're putting uh, we're getting the agreements in place so that we can move as expeditious as possible.
Okay.
We get that.
Right.
Thank you.
Clarifying questions. Roll call on this item.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Oh.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Vice president Capriolio?
Yeah.
President Arias?
Yes. All right, council. And we are now gonna go to a breakout room for closed session. You will receive a breakout room invitation. Please accept it. And we will begin closed session in approximately two minutes. Thank you. Um, city ma, city attorney, please announce the item for closed session discussion.
Yeah, in closed session, we have a conference of legal counsel concerning public security.
Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on this closed session item? So you have a minute to address the council now. All right, seeing none, uh, council, you will now receive an invitation for the closed session breakout room. Please accept it.
Council vice president Capriolio, can you confirm that you're online?
All right, council, it looks like we're ready with everybody online. Um, let's go ahead and reconvene for the public portion of the emergency meeting to discuss one last item sponsored by councilmember Carbasi, Chavez, and vice president Capriolio. Um, councilmember Carbasi, uh, of note, councilmember Chavez is joining us in the law library. So he is here in person and has already annoyed me, so for the record, he might get his out. Uh, but with that said, councilmember Carbasi, Chavez, and Capriolio, you have the floor.
Luis, do you wanna talk about this? Uh, councilmember Chavez?
He's referring to.
Okay, so, uh, um, basically, what we're offering is one option. Now, the California ABC um has made it clear that they are uh, well, they wanna help restaurants move forward through the pandemic, and we need to look at different options. Um, with with the way the ABC works is there's only certain areas that are regulated for dining. Um, there are certain places indoors where you can't dine unless it's permitted. They're willing to change that. They're gonna grant what's called a temporary COVID-19 temporary catering authorization so that we can have dining in areas that typically aren't allowed. Part of the purpose of this, and this may not work for everybody, but we wanna make sure it's one option restaurants have moving forward, is to allow other options so we can have better ventilation, because um they're, they may be limited by their physical capacity. We wanna give them more options so they can have more patrons that can dine. We still, you know, restaurants are still gonna have to be careful about liability, and we're gonna move forward on 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 making sure that it's a feasible option for them. But what we're trying to do is have a greater convers, this is the start of a greater conversation, how we can help our different industries as they recover. And this is just one step in that process. Council uh co-sponsors, do you guys wanna comment?
Uh, sure. Basically, uh, it it was really nice to work with my colleagues, uh, member Carbasi and member Chavez uh in coming up with this format. And as we've been doing all day, we're chipping away at the exclusion of businesses operating in Fresno, and this is another uh chip, if you will, to open up restaurants without violating, without violating uh the state ordinance, which will, we're not putting at risk uh state penalties or repercussions, for instance, state licensing and so forth. Th- this is a very uh very unique situation that we've developed, and we think that will be uh useful to restaurants and enable them to open in a reasonable fashion. So now we'll have takeout, patio dining, and then the next step, once the county gets busy and uh con, and gets the governor to give the variance to the county, then that opens up the city to do what we have been doing responsibly and in a very, very efficient way uh for our local uh businesses. So I thank my colleagues, uh, and I think uh everyone should support this. Uh, it's a huge step in the correct direction. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember vice president Capriolio. Do we have any questions from the council on this item? All right, councilwoman Soria, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you um to the co-sponsors for allowing time for me to review the ordinance. Uh, just have a couple of questions. One regarding um the effective timeline. Um, as I read in one of the last sections, um, that this section show up, show expire um and be repealed one year from the effective date. Uh, shouldn't we match it up with kind of the emergency ordinance or the emergency um timeframe that we have? That way it's.
So we're, we're, that's a great point, and I'm happy if you wanna make a friendly amendment. When we worked on this last week, uh, we were also working on with the administration on the emergency order, so we didn't have that date finalized, but absolutely, I'm I'm open to that.
Yeah, I think that that would um give much more clarity in terms of, you know, until. And then the other thing, um, I'm thinking about.
If I can, by the way, that's a very minor change. I don't mind that, but I wanna let my, I'm sorry, councilmember, I want my co-sponsors to comment as well before we go to the next thing, if that's okay?
Uh, council president Capriolio here. I appreciate that. Uh, however, I would rather see us continue it for a year or until we decide to review, revoke, or review, or pull back that order, only because if we match the governor, we may not be able to implement the next step as fast as we normally would. So I'd rather, uh, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just trying to say we have to make it so flexible that those that can qualify and operate can can continue to operate until they flip into the full open mode of a restaurant or other food facility. Does that make sense?
Like, is working, um, and that it's also being done in a safe manner. I wanna make sure that folks are protected, both the employees, and so I'd like to figure out a way to kind of monitor that, because if we're just saying we're gonna repeal it one year from now, or, you know.
So, I. I have something, Mr. President?
Wait, council, hold on, hold on. Not talking over you. Allow me to have the city attorney respond to this question.
Okay.
Yeah, at the beginning of the ordinance, it says this applies for so long as the uh restaurants are prohibited from uh allowing full capacity during the emergency.
Right.
So it only applies as long as the state is saying you can't have full capacity.
Yeah, it's also partially contingent, councilmember, on as long as the ABC, in this cases, are people that, places that have beer and wine or liquor, the COVID-19 temporary catering authorization. Once that goes away, that's gonna change a lot of things, too.
I guess when I read the ordinance, and, and you know, this is maybe just the the way that I'm reading it, just the last section that if you guys are going by the first section, the last section kinda makes it confusing then. So I would just make sure that that's that that's clarified. Um, the other thing, I just had a question, because I do have like a number of areas in my district that are like the tower, where there there are restaurants that could benefit from this, but they don't necessarily have like a parking lot where they could, you know, create, um, I don't know, um, a patio or whatnot. I know that we've done, um, what is it? I think we did a pilot on like a parklet. So are we gonna be open for um restaurants to do parklets where they can actually dine and create more space in those parking spaces that are in front of the restaurants?
That's part of what the order allows. That's already included, and that's a good point.
So it does allow that.
Mm-hmm, parking spaces, yes, it does.
But, so the city is authorizing that, like, what do um restaurants have to do? So say, for example, I have a restaurant, a a number of restaurants in in the tower, like Sequoia. Say if they didn't have, if they didn't have a patio, but they wanted to do outdoor dining.
Oh, yeah, if if I can refer to the legal accounts on this, I think what you're asking for clarity on is this order calls for private parking lots to be used for this. Are we allowing city, you know, parking spaces and city streets to be used as temporary?
This does not provide for that.
This order does not provide for that, so.
So it doesn't.
I wanna use that your 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 parking space in front of, you know, Boca Taqueria or in front of, you know, Bitwise, this order will not allow for that.
Is there any way that we could figure out if, and I don't know how the administration would feel about that?
Well, if I can add something, since you're changing the bill, if, and I appreciate the the sentiment, um, that is what we're intending to do, and we're gonna be working with the administration. The main purpose of this bill is to make it very clear that this city council is committed to embracing ideas to help every industry and economic recovery, especially our hard-hit restaurant industry. And if if this includes uh the parklet that you talked about, that's absolutely part of the intent of this bill. If you want us to make it specific, we can do that, too, but that is the intent in working with the city administration to accomplish that goal.
I would, I would like to see that. That would be awesome, because I think it could.
It's in there, but if you want, okay, um, city attorney.
In other words, would you like to amend it in in subparagraph eight, beginning? Outdoor dining is permitted in common areas of shopping centers and parking lots, you could say, as well as city property.
That's fine. It's it's a minor detail. It's already in there. That's fine. Sure. I'm okay with that if my colleagues are okay with that.
It it's in the, it's in the uh. It's in the, it's in the bill, but if that makes people happy, that's fine with me.
Sure.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You have the floor. And for the record, Council, before we continue, just a quick breaking news update for everyone, the county of Fresno just got their variance approved by the state, so they will be able to enter two point five with restaurants dining in as well, thank you all. Go ahead, Councilmember Carbasi.
Yeah, my question was primarily for the city attorney, but the sponsors can feel free to jump in. Is there any portion of this legislation that is out of line with state guidelines or state compliance?
No, it expressly requires anybody to be in compliance with both the county and state provisions.
Okay, and then in terms of, I mean, there's just so many different setups throughout the city, right? Restaurants are located in all kinds of different spots, and in my district, there may not be a whole ton of the restaurants that are able to benefit from this in particular. I'm thinking about restaurants that maybe are in a crowded shopping center, right? I mean, how do we settle, as long as we're allowing it to be on this private property and allowing it to be on city property now as well? I mean, how do we settle any kind of business disputes or nuisance complaints? Is there gonna be a process for that?
Well, first, it has to have one with the permission of the property owner and whatever conditions the property owner imposes. Also, there's a provision that allows for the city manager with the approval of the police chief and city attorney to issue further regulations that could address those details.
Which I believe, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, that language alone allows me to address the issues with insurance and issues that may come up from Public Works.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's all my questions.
All right, Councilmember Brettafield, looks like you have the floor next. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to ask, on the, all employees must wear masks. Councilman Carbasi, are you gonna do face shields?
I'd like to stick to the subject matter at hand, we're not discussing that right now, that's not included in this order, in this, in this, in this ordinance, is that correct, Mr. President?
No, it is included.
I'll do the legal counsel on the matter, what's the question for us?
On C, it says all employees must wear masks.
Oh, you're asking if it can be a mask or a face shield?
Yes.
It's a, we can change language to protect a facial covering, and that would include a face shield, let me seem more comfortable.
Restaurants want to have a face shield rather than a mask.
Well, I think it should be up to the restaurants to decide what they want to have, whether it's a mask or a face shield.
Are you willing to change that in the language here?
Again, I think it's already included, but, yes, Council Vice President?
Will you say mask, it includes a variety, cloth, noncloth, face shields, et cetera. So the phrase that's in there leaves, excuse me, it leaves it open for the restaurateur or business to be in compliance with, with what we are evidencing and setting forth as guidelines. So it may include that, it may not, but we want to do whatever it takes to make the business safely, operationable, and safe for the employees, the public, and the customers.
Okay, that's good, I share that sentiment, it's just I've, I've gotten some texts from people who have expressly were concerned that it said masks and not face shields, because they plan on using clear face shields when they're serving customers. You feel that it's okay to leave it as it is? I'm fine with that, but I just hope it doesn't become an issue down the road, because they, they want to use those clear face, those face shields as opposed to a mask.
That, that's, again, Councilmembers, this is why we wrote it this way, so we can give that flexibility to the restaurants to do the right thing and make their own decisions.
I'm okay with it, perfect.
Okay, it looks like we have a motion to approve this item, actually, we don't have a motion, so can somebody make a motion to approve?
No, Vice President, make a motion, please.
President Caprero, second by Councilmember Carbasi, with the amendment that it includes city property with the approval of the city manager and the appropriate authorities. Is there any members of public wishing to address this item by the council? I see one, Member Flores, you will have three minutes to address accounts on this item, you are unmuted, go ahead.
My one big question is about the face mask, whether it's a shield or not. I just want to make sure if I decide to go out to dinner someplace, which is kind of highly unlikely, until there's a vaccine, that this shield protects me from any sort of droplets from a person speaking. And also too, is there language in your, in this, that also states that the face or shield shall cover the mouth and the nose, because I've seen, you know, from the mouths of your police force, basically saying as long as they have a mask on their head, not necessarily covering their nose or their mouth, they're not gonna get stopped, they're not gonna get corrected, because that's what the thing, whatever they're working off of says. And I, as a high-risk heart patient, who's someone who's ADA, would appreciate, you know, restaurants making sure that their employees cover their face, their nose, their mouth, because as it is, I have delivery people who deliver my groceries that don't even come up with the mask. I had pizza guy last night show up without a mask, and their comments are always, well, it's in the car, I can go and get it. And it kind of defeats the purpose of pandemic spread and, you know, just the transmission of droplets that have been proven to spread coronavirus.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
First of the public question, address accounts on this item, always open. City Nine, City Park, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Asparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caprero?
Yes, absolutely.
President Arias?
Yes. Arias, yes.
Yes, thank you, seven oh.
All right, thank you, that concludes our meeting for this afternoon, Council. Thank you for your cooperation and for making sure that I don't have to kick Councilmember Chavez out of my protective bubble. Have a wonderful day, and the meeting stands adjourned at two o'clock today, thank you all.